Good morning ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 22nd, 7:30 in the morning. It's wonderful, it's light outside, let the record show that the councilors are all here. Chipper, happy? Yes, and that's it. Do you have minutes in front of you from February 8th, 29th? Are they okay?
Move to approve.
Second call, please say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries, thank you very much. I think we have a visitor this morning. And just go ahead and drop paperwork off with Karen. And then you have a few minutes to introduce yourself. And good morning and welcome to the Independence City Council meeting.
Good morning, I had to plan on welcoming myself, but it's a pleasure. My name is Laura Moret, and I'm a candidate for House District 20. I'm currently held by Paul Evans. My husband and I, 28 years, live in South St. Louis. We have three adult grown children, and I have two grandkids. We've been small business owners for 28 years, and we own a construction company. And I'm interested to find out a little bit more what's going on here in Independence, and how I can help. I have a webpage and everything, so if you need more information about me, you can even go there or walk up to me personally, and I'd love to tell you about myself and why I'm running. So, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to making it all better.
Thank you very much. Glad to see you this morning, appreciate that. Under reports today, I'll just let you know that I continue to be doing things with the Regional Solutions Team, Council Governments, and League of Oregon Cities. We have a number of different things going on as well with the commissioners, managers, and mayors, and we have a meeting at 7:00 AM this coming Friday to just keep everybody connected, and we're working on a couple of projects together. Liaison reports this morning, let's start with Winpey. Council Liz Khan, good morning.
Morning. Okay, we had our meeting, and it was just three of us. And the new business that we talked about is the current policy with L.A. is not due for renewal until July 1st. The yearly price will be $757.12. A call to a local agent at Stigent Insurance has confirmed, we can't find a better policy. Their lowest price was close to $900. We're trying to get insurance. And then the new MOU agreement between WIPAC and WOU. John will take the paperwork to the Monmouth City Council, and I'm taking mine to convince that here it is, the agreement. We have a new website. Deborah made a motion for Ryan to purchase WIPAC Board for $14.99, and to create a new website. It was second in the crew. And then they're gonna do a new inventory list, and discussion about finding more volunteers. John will contact Pedro in art galleries, and discussion on short-term space for equipment and training classes. New equipment. New camera packages will be distributed to both libraries. Once the new website is ready, and contact information can be posted there, and in various newsletters and email, such as the April Mailroom. And then next month, we're gonna be talking about the finances, our financial budget. Meeting was adjourned. That's it.
Questions? Okay, Council Hoffman on MyNet.
Yes. I think you all received a copy of the report to councils a couple weeks ago. I just want to reiterate the three points that were brought up in the report. Number one, we now have more people watching MyNet programming on mobile sites than we do on computers, on desktop computers. We have people who are cutting cord and moving everything to streaming. And so, MyNet is preparing, has prepared to incorporate that into our regular... We're not charging people extra to do that, as at this point. We're doing that in partnership with the National Cable Television Cooperative, and that is ongoing, and we'll, as all of our state, as all of our channels start to stream, we will incorporate that into the plan for no additional cost. Addition to that, the report from Doug Dawes, Dawson, our consultant, will probably be presented on Thursday, our council meeting, our report on the next mid-month, which is all about the financial status of MyNet, and how we are structuring the ongoing development of... We now have 85% of the people in the community, or sorry, 75% of the people in the community have been penetrated, so that's a very high number. Finally, MyNet has been invited to serve on panel at the Broadband Summit in Seattle beginning of the month, and actually, we were invited two hours after we signed on. So, they're very excited about happiness there, and that's in, I'm sorry. That is in conjunction with all we're doing in the innovation area, and all the things that we are doing ongoing to develop MyNet as a key marketing strategy in our community.
Great.
Thank you.
Can I add a couple of words if I step back and put on my MyNet app, please? We just finished that, that was Sunday and Monday, and we made an excellent contact, and was very excited, by the way, with the special representative of the President of the United States on broadband delivery to rural areas.
Great, thank you for that addition.
Thank you. Can I ask a question, please? I was just wondering about the streaming becoming more and more popular, does, do you guys know yet, or have you looked what the impact is gonna be on income? Do we expect a significant drop in income due to going to more streaming?
No, because people are running the package, and so they're getting it through their cable system, I mean through their internet.
Okay. Great. Excellent.
Well, I'd love to give you a report. The last time the planning commission met was in August of 2015. So, there really isn't any information there?
Well, I know they do have a commission about planning commission meeting coming up in April, so. Great. Okay, city staff, Klein.
Mayor Embers Account. Morning. A few things, shorter report than normal. So, yesterday, we had our, some white hairs in. They are, they have met on their first meeting, their initial meeting, to discuss the creation of what's known as an APA, an American Economic Area, or a sub-APA. We're all part of the Willamette APA. In this area, there's a North and South APA for the Willamette, and their sub-regions the closest to us is the old Hennany Hills to the north. So, the conversation surrounded a number of different things, largely naming whether it's a good thing or not a good thing, commonalities in the area, whether 1 APA, 1 sub-APA, or 2 sub-APAs makes sense, a lot of different elements in the conversation, so I think that's gonna continue on, and we're looking forward to that as another tool for us in terms of attracting visitors to our area, and supporting our new development over here. So, Concrete Site, former Valley Concrete Site, yet to be named. Something else.
Okay, I still like the Independence Landing, or the Independence Waterfront. I just want to continue to throw those out as possible.
And I think the development team may like that also, so we'll have further conversation there.
Of course.
If you will, for the time being, go to Google, Oregon Historic Newspaper Project, and soon you will find a link on the city's library webpage. You will find historic newspapers online dating back, well, dating back the itemizer and the West Side through 1922. So, stuff's to put to bag here. I think there's concerns about concrete issues, so those are not posted, but it's up to that point, you can find a lot of local history, you know, the Canoe with the itemizer and its predecessor, the West Side. So, paid for with the Grand Old Time Culture was Coalition and the Friends Library. So, Rob showed it off to us the other day in the staff meeting, it was a whole lot of fun, so I think you can enjoy browsing that. A couple of things on Valley Concrete, we're gonna talk a little further later in executive session, but one, we're having a Regional Solutions Team meeting today, that's the staff level with various state, various state officials to talk about ways, hopefully they can help us to get across the finish line of this project. So, there's a lot of different resources out there, and they wanna know what we're doing, so we're here to provide them a bit of information. We'll have our development team here, and most of our consulting team here to interact with them, and show them some help, show them what's going on. Other than that, the project is proceeding, and we're working hard at this point on the financials for the project, so make sure that we, we're hitting that point where it makes sense for everybody to go forward. There has been some, you know, some other guys who are completing, completed the survey work, the latest survey work on the site, so they have that information, and we'll have it shortly. The old City Hall, if you're not aware, the emergency area is scheduled last Friday, the judge was sick, so that's rescheduled for tomorrow. We'll get you the information out as we get it. I get a pretty good call, I think there's a pretty good group of followers now, vendors or former vendors, that have, you know, keeping in contact with me to see when the areas are rescheduled, because they like to attend. They have an interest in seeing that, seeing us complete that foreclosure. It's always kind of fun, that conversation. Working, everybody's working very hard on a budget capital improvement plan, so that's taking a lot of everyone's time, certainly the finance director's time and the staff. LGPI, Government Personnel Institute, we had a, I would characterize it as our first really, first real meeting with our new director, and frankly, it looks, it looks like things are turning, the ship is turning, and it is really making, looks like it has some promise to get out of the hole that it's been in. So, they're starting to grow their local businesses that are shrinking for a change, they're adding membership back. The new director is very dynamic, he's a, he's a, he's a good business, good money-maker for the business. So, I think we're gonna get out of that hole with him at the helm, and I think we're gonna make some good, do that in that business, and do that agency which serves us in many of our personnel needs, our bargaining needs and other needs, I think will be whole, much for our future. We have a job fair coming up, Wednesday, from 10:00 to 1:00 at the high schools, so the city is in part sponsoring that effort, as we did last year, had a good response last year, we're getting good response this year on Facebook, we have already 32 employers scheduled to be there showcasing their offerings, so to extend that you know people that are out in the job market, this is their chance to connect with real-life jobs. So, do what you can get the word out of. And then we're starting the conversation about putting together a booth for the city, I think we mentioned this before, for Western Days, so the city staff, volunteers, hopefully councilors would like to join us and spend some time at a booth, and talk about what's going on in the city during the course of Western Days, so the city council booth there. So, that's what I had for this, for today, a few questions, and just, thank you.
Questions for Mr. Klein? Everybody good? Your answers are good?
Thank you.
Okay, any other reports from staff this morning? No, okay, moving forward, we already have the MyNet monthly report that Council Hoffman mentioned in the, in the packet, and I think that's pretty self-explanatory, unless there's additional need. Moving forward, joint council meeting, had conversations with Mayor Olbers, and his suggestion was by agreement, he'd like to delay that until the 31st of May to get a couple of other things together, and so we're gonna move that over to May 31, and that moves everything forward. Moving forward on our new business, we have a grant application, Mr. Irvine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is pretty similar to, maybe the last time I was at the council meeting, a couple weeks ago. This is for a local government grant application to the Oregon Parks Recreation Department. This would be to, as you told from the staff report, the proposal is to pave the Willamette River Trail, actually, what I'm proposing is from essentially City Hall all the way up to the new oak ramp on the end drive there. This would be essentially just striping the tree line, sort of what I consider the main trail, not the little offshoots that go through the repairing area or the loop that goes around the park, but still, it'd be close to a mile of trail to be paved, 10-foot wide concrete, be great, you know, all-weather, and all-accessibility for everybody. The opportunity here is you can tie it in with the gravel site development. We are assuming and intending for the part portion of that gravel site to be developed along with Phase 1 by the developer, and that creates the opportunity for matching funds for a grant. So, the idea would be the levers the developers work into when the grant is paid, the rest of this trail will not go up north. So, the grant requires a resolution support and commitment from the city council, so here we are.
Questions for...
So, the way I read this, in a way, if you're heading north on the trail, there'd be two trails, one inside of the very area, which is the current one, and then a new trail that's paved.
There's kind of two right now. There's one that runs essentially just kind of striping the tree line all the way north, and then there's another one that parallel options of that trail and go into the trees. And so, this would pave the one, like I said, the one that I consider the main trail, would just run along the tree line, the most direct route, and it's also, you know, once you start getting into trees, it gets a lot harder to put concrete down.
Sounds wonderful.
Everybody good? So, I just had a question about the matching funds, you use some of our engineering fees that we've already invested, would some of the SDCs also go towards that, or do we know exactly?
It depends on how we want to do it. You know, we could potentially place some of the city's parks SDC funds towards this project, if we want to put an actual city cash match into it. Like I said, the intent is to match it with levers expended by the developer on parks, there's a decent chance that may end up being some type of SDC credit, in which case we may sort of be paying for that with our SDCs and probably without fashion, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, that is, yes. The other thing is maybe more of a design feature, will there also be a soft path, because I know some runners prefer to run on soft, is it, will there also be a soft path paralleling or...
Yeah, it would be to have a, or to have a soft sort of shoulder on the side of the parts of the trail.
Okay, great, thank you. Additional questions? If someone would suggest action?
I have a motion. I move to a pre-resolution 16-1425 authorizing the application for a local government grant for...
Have a motion, there's seconds here, further discussion. All firms signify with saying aye.
Aye.
And a close motion carries, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
So, this is a project that we picked up and dropped at a number of times through the last few years, so we're finally getting it before you, that we have decided to go with business registration as opposed to business license, hopefully to take some of the bureaucracy out of it, and help the businesses understand a little better that we want, it's designed for their benefit, not as a revenue stream for the city. We have attached a proposed, kind of what we would propose to put into the ordinance for you to look at. Councilor Lodge had pointed out on page nine, 3D, we will check the ordinance that is currently in place to make sure that that is how it is currently. Do you have any thoughts on that, Karen? It has to do with the garage sales. In here, it says, "By no more than four such sales are done annually and lasts no longer than three days at a time." We'll look at the ordinance, make sure that that's the way it reads. And Council Morton wanted to make sure that we weren't including garage sales in segment nine.
Could you, for our TV audience, very, very briefly, the purpose, the reason we want to have, you're suggesting a registration, what that fee is?
We're proposing a registration fee of $10, and it's an annual update of, you know, what we hope to achieve in this is, for instance, the police department needs to know who is in business, who to contact if there's an emergency, you know, those kind of things. And then, for us, administratively, is to make sure that those businesses are operating in the proper zones, and those kind of things.
I know that the police and fire folks have, for a number of years, wanted to know who's in business and what they're doing, so I know the emergency response folks in the fire district likes to know, you know, who's doing, and what kind of business they are, so they, they need to know that, they know, and Mr. Klein, you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah, I just want to add, this, we use the benefits of the business community as well. Businesses typically can get started and find out if they forgot, you know, or didn't understand what steps one and two were, you know, again, Lori mentioned zoning and the other regulatory hurdles, so it helps them get started correctly, but not able to restart, and, you know, avoid the anger, but it gives us an option to give that customer service from the outset, if they may need to have a successful business.
Am I correct, if I recall correctly from previous conversations, business communities asked for this?
They have, we've heard it both from the Chamber and from the Downtown Association over the years.
We will be taking this upon your approval. We will be taking this to the Item Board and the Chamber Board, and presenting our thoughts to, and make sure that they're okay with the language, and if there's any more language adjustments, then we'll bring that back to you, based on that.
One more question. I know that places like vendors at Western Days and Hop Festival and other events are not required to do this. Would this, though, include places like the food carts that are pretty much permanently in place?
Those already have a mobile vendor license, and so those are covered in a different ordinance, so this would not include those particular vendors.
Additional questions? Next person, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I actually think it's a pretty good idea, I just want to make this as easy as possible for business people. One question I had, well, we had a couple of them. One, I know that nonprofits, people setting up temporary businesses, like selling Christmas trees or something like that, from the Boy Scouts, that wouldn't be required to register. What about somebody who just sets up, they're on their own, selling Christmas trees? I know there's a couple lots here. They're not nonprofits, would they have to get this registration?
I don't know that we would trust that.
No, they would not have to be, get this registered to do this, because they are already required to get a mobile vendor license, so they have...
Do you say?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The other question I had, well, under, let's see, under restrictions required, Item 3, number I, you talk about contractors that operate in Independence, but they live outside of Independence. What about contractors that live in, maybe they operate out of their home, but they're contractors and they work in Independence? Is that kind of covered under the home occupation, or is that...
Yeah, it's a home occupation. We pretty much left that off the table on this one.
Okay, okay. And then, under conditions, we talked about the city being able to go in and inspect for safety and that sort of thing, is that already something we can do, or is that kind of...
Yes, we've got, you know, we've got the building codes, that if there's a suspected violation, or if there's also, is there an inspection, an annual...
Well, there's health department inspections through the county.
Do we get copies of those, the health department inspections?
Not that I'm aware of, I'm sure they count, I don't know what the county posts those non-discipline.
I would imagine it's public record, though, isn't it?
Yeah, it is public record, the statesman runs some Marion County ones, the neighborhood.
Right. Every week. So, what was your question?
Well, I just wondered, are we, are we giving the city more power to go in and investigate businesses, or is this pretty much where we're at now?
This is really a status quo, with the exception that we're asking them to come to our door first before they do something that may be taking down the wrong road.
Okay.
So, this is no new regulatory authority, we're just adding this registration process and picking up data and alerting everybody that they're about to go into business.
Okay.
Well, one of our neighboring communities kind of caught some flak for regulating limited standards, we're not very regulated. It's been a while since I looked at the registration requirements, and it seemed that several years ago, when I looked at it, the city already had a registration process, though it wasn't mandated, is that, has that changed?
We have, we have certain businesses that are required to get a business license. Those are like secondhand stores, then there's the mobile vending permits, so there is...
Pool tables, things like that.
Dance halls.
Dance halls, yeah, just like that.
Okay, I had some information that showed me that once upon a time, there was a registration process here, and it was for the, for the purpose of public safety, but...
Not to my knowledge, do you know?
We talked about it a lot over the years.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my understanding, is it's come to council and been worked on by staff for a long, long time, and there's never been really a consensus on doing it.
Okay, so as I understand it, go ahead.
We've had, again, we've had registration licensing for targeted businesses, but to my knowledge, we've not had comprehensive, you know, business licensing or registration process.
Thanks. And then, I'm, I just want to be clear, so say somebody who makes bracelets out of beads or whatever, in their home, is not required to register that business?
We're not doing home businesses? Not? I think so. We, you know, we talked about, in the committee that kind of pulled this together, we talked about like the daycares and the contractors, for instance, and as a committee, we pretty much left off home-based businesses, but I don't know, we can talk about that some more, and...
I wonder if it would be helpful to you, this is really your first look at it, you know, we've got a staff meeting, if you'd like to hold this and look at it for until your next council meeting or a couple council meetings, and when you come back with it, that's fine, it's not gonna rush so far.
That would be helpful to me, however, I have specific questions about things like eBay businesses, online businesses, that have deliveries and that sort of thing going on, I don't, I don't know where it falls in here. And then also, I... And then also, I, we talked, we use the word approve and we've talked about, well, some people from the Chamber and this Downtown Association said if I was a good idea, I would like to hear from them. I'd like to see their buy-in, maybe even give them an opportunity to speak in favor or against if they are before we, before we actually approve an ordinance.
That is our recommendation and that is, is the plan that we have going forward, is that we would seek the buy-in from Idaho and the Chamber and give their input and so that council has their input.
And so if it affects businesses that are not members of either one of those organizations, is there a way or a plan for how we can get the word out so we can hear from them as well?
No, we don't. We don't have a plan on getting that out to those that aren't involved in...
Newsletter.
Yeah, because that, the newsletter would most likely be the only way because we don't know who those businesses are right now.
I don't know how we would reach them, but it would be advantageous, I think, for us to hear from them.
Right. We can, we can announce that in our newsletter, which is probably a great idea.
And certainly on our Facebook as well. But again, it might be, it would help us understand what businesses ultimately that you want to see covered or excluded from this consideration. That'll help us sort of figure out how to get the word out to those particular businesses. You know, have a better idea if it's all, if it does include all home occupations, which for sure we're going to want to put in the newsletter, in the Facebook, in every forum, you know, to send issue we have.
Right, yeah.
In, in the document you provided, not required of free A home occupations defined in the Development Code, Chapter 72. I don't recall Chapter 72 exactly. And so I'm agreeing with you.
It would be helpful to have, see that text.
Yeah.
We could include that as an attachment the next time.
I have a suggestion. You're already planning on working on some kind of code language. Why don't you go ahead and do that and let us see that before we make a more focused decision on things? Because I think that that would be, Idaho particularly, or the Chamber members would like to see what exactly is being considered and be able to reply to that. On home businesses, there are about 300 in Independence.
Really?
Really. And you can get access to those on the state corporation site. But especially now that a home business, you mentioned childcare, that's licensed under another, another level through the state. And if some of those were delineated, contractors would have to have a contractor's license. And, but now we also have the potential of growers being in town. And I'd like to know what the, what the restrictions are on that from a state level. And I know that that's not all decided yet, but I think that should be rolled into what we consider on the final document.
Okay. Go back to staff and start looking on that.
Well, so, let me, to be clear, a couple, you know, a couple things, just call responses. We're happy to go ahead and have the legal prepare the, you know, the form of legislation. We were trying to avoid that cost until we had some consensus around what wanted to be, would you want it to be covered or are you even interested in so it isn't if the business community was interested pursuant to this. But if that's your privilege, we'll go ahead and have that done before we get the document out. My sense is that we were trying to complement the concept to everybody first so that included the business community, so that everybody can get a sense of what we're, you know, what we're proposing. And then we could boil it down into legislation that will come back to you and, and just at your, at your beck and call. The other piece of that is, again, this is not regulatory, but it is merely a registration. So we're not going to fold in anybody else's requirements into this document, into this effort, our licensing. So of course, many, many people, you know, many communities have, you know, that it meets all state laws, that's not something you're going to see in this document.
But even a mention of it to say, just an asterisk or something and say, these are otherwise regulated. Look at the conversation that it's, that it's engendered here this morning. I think that we need to have a, even if it's a list of these are the businesses that would be eligible for falling under a license. And I know it's not regulatory, it's registrational. But I think if we have this amount of conversation this morning, then you're going to find something similar, even broader, in an Idaho discussion.
Could you put that other definition, the definition of business not regulated?
Right. Yeah. If I may interrupt on, in your packet on page eight, and subsequently, that is essentially code language that we have proposed and you will see those businesses actually listed in there that would be exempt from the registration requirements, including, you know, all of those that already previously aren't re-licensed. And it's got all of these other ones that are exempt from registration, the home occupations, the city sanctioned events like Western Days and the Hop Festival, all of these ones here. So if there are any others that you would like to include in that exemption list, we would be glad to include those.
Mr. Klein, can I suggest, given all the conversation, this is a healthy conversation, we bring this back to you at your next study session and then get it out to the community after then, so that we have a lovely, fair, healthier conversation about it.
My other question is, would it be better to get some business input upfront and then we can have it?
Yeah, I would think, I think we should proceed with what the recommendation would...
Because we're not approving this. We're approving to go forward.
But get it in front of Idaho, get it in front of some Chamber members.
Yeah.
Get it in front of some of the businesses.
At a conceptual level.
At a conceptual level.
Exactly.
Because why go to all bunch of work if you have all kinds of issues? That is really where we were trying to have with that, was to get, get the input of the business community before we get too far into it.
Because I know sometimes what happens is that when you, when people see abuse of legislation, even if it says draft all over it, folks start making a 13725 and they start jumping. I like the idea of conceptual, it's conceptual talking about what the, and then after we get all the pieces in, then we have the legal folks put it in the right form, then we can, you know, we can, we work on the concept, then we send it to legal, then we get it back and then people get a sense to look at it again. So there's, because there's no, there's no hurry on this, this has taken, this has been under discussion for a long, long time. And so let's just take the process, because I think the process is really important in this one.
Just one more comment. And I think it's really important that as we, as we move forward with the concept, that we have more clarity on who benefits and how they benefit.
That is a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, well, I know. Yes, absolutely. They're all good points. Well, when this was introduced, I haven't known many times, but 10, 12, 14 years ago, there was a presentation by the fire chief. And that really impressed me about how much information they could use prior to responding to a fire as example, like, is this business have flammables in it? Is it tie-dye business or, you know, those kinds of things? And that all sounded pretty legitimate.
Mr. Klein, I mean, both the Chamber, the business community in general sort of likes it because it gives them an opportunity to see who can we, you know, where can we do a little bit of marketing ourselves?
Yes, yes.
So let me see if I've encapsulated this and tell me about, so what we're going to do is, there's going to be a conceptual presentation to Chamber and Idaho to get first, first response in what, and a clear delineation of what, what the benefits are, why we're interested in the registration, how everybody benefits and that, get some input from that. And then they're going to bring this all back to us. And at that point, I would guess that it would be appropriate to ask for some, if Council makes a suggestion, some input, to actually have some folks stand in front of us and say, this makes good sense to us. And at a conceptual level, then we will send it. If it passes muster at that point, then we'll send it to the legal folks, put it in the, in the right form because it will have some input, then we can go through that process and everybody can see it again. Does that sound like an appropriate way to move forward? Does that provide a clear direction?
Yes, thank you.
Great. And I want to thank you because as Nancy pointed out, this, this has been, this is one of those things that rises and knocking another one off.
Right.
It's great. And so, kudos. And I really, and yeah, a registration, I really emphasize this is a registration. I'd like your clarification on that. Great. Unless there's anything else we need to do with this, we're going to keep moving. Okay?
Thank you for everyone's input.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we have our, we have traditionally gone, our second meeting in April to Central High School. I'm going to assume, unless somebody yells and screams, that we'd like to do that same meeting. Again, we adjust our time to 8:30. Karen, did you, was this your item?
Yes, we just wanted to make, to find out for sure what kind of questions you wanted to ask the students. The one that we came up with in staff meeting was, what is your vision of Independence in 10 years?
Pretty broad. And you know they're not going to answer exactly that.
I'm pretty sure it's a...
Did you know if you, if the council had a different question in mind or... I think it's a good icebreaker question because they, they say what they want to say anyway. Yeah, they do, they do. But it's a way to get a call on.
This is what, is it, I think this is like year 12, we've done that. And so, all right, if staff would make the appropriate, and I just want to let folks know, I recognize, and I think council of us, that it takes extra work to pick up a city council meeting and take it in front of the high school senior class of, you know, there are 225 folks there. We are, according to the teachers and staff at the school, this, this is all the local government that they get. And so I really appreciate council doing that and also showing that local folks are the people who do it, you know, it's mom's dad, it's grandpa's. Grandma, grandpas. And so I think it's been really helpful. And so I just want to thank folks and staff for doing that. Are there other, what I'd like to do is, there's, before we go to executive session, are there council announcements that people would like to make at this time? Any announcements? Any announcements?
I think so.
No announcements? My goodness.
No more.
Okay. Independent City Council now meeting Executive Session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions. The Executive Session tells pursuant to ORS 1926602E plus council meeting, Executive Session. Representatives of the news media and destination staff should be allowed to attend the Executive Session. Representatives of the news media who are secondly directed, not to report an invalid regulation for the Executive Session, except for state and general subject of the section previously announced, those simple will be made in the Executive Session. This time the council, the conference room for the regulation, the Executive Session, once the Executive Session has adjourned, we will return to open session, the council chambers. Just to let folks know, we don't anticipate any action out of the Executive Session. I anticipate we'll come back and move to adjourn and be done. So that's it. And why don't we take, just, let's get started in about five minutes or if we can make a quick stop. Sound good? Okay.